Lisa, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I can. Jeff West.
Here.
Steve Russell.
Here.
Patricia Air. I think she's muted. There she is. Lee Trahan.
Here.
Derek Querian.
Let's go.
Ben Twitchell.
Here.
And Ray Karen.
Here.
Everybody is present.
Yep, to get the, to, one thing Chad had asked us to do to start the meeting is to do the pledge of allegiance, but because of the feedback and the coordination effort is hard, I asked Ben if he would just do the pledge of allegiance for us and then we could, we could just follow along.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ben. And we have some table business, but I, I think everybody's in agreement for the most part that we'll keep that table business. The table business is providing for authorization for the town manager to accept the attached proposal agreement from dirical engineering to design a drainage system for property on a Christian road at a cost of fourteen thousand. Do we, is the council's wish to keep that table for now till Monday?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All business as none. And then the new business, we can get into the new business at this point. Just get it. Town council order number six dash two thousand twenty in order, providing for authorization for the town manager to purchase two used ambulances and associated equipment at a cost of two hundred and four thousand dollars, four hundred. Be it ordered by the town. I want to read it all, please. Be it ordered by the town council of the town of Winslow as follows. Whereas the town ambulance committee has voted four to two to recommend to the Winslow town council that the town implement fire chief Rodriguez attached proposed used ambulance purchase and begin transporting the fire department's patients to the hospital when necessary. And where, and whereas the town has the funds in the fire department capital account to cover the cost, the purchase of, now therefore be it ordered by the town council of the town of Winslow that the town manager is hereby authorized to purchase two used ambulances and associated equipment at a cost of two hundred and four thousand, four hundred dollars, sponsored by the administration. Do we have a motion? Motion to open discussion?
So.
By who?
Steve.
Sure.
Seconded by who?
Lee, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, and open up for discussion. Hey, Jeff?
Hello?
Would you, I, I sent you, kind of sent you an email before. Would you be willing to read the town of Winslow ambulance committee recommendation? Or, or does people think that that might be a good idea to do first, just to get some more discussion out there?
The only thing I have, Ray, would be my phone and I can't read it.
Okay, you do, do you mind, Jeff, if I read the committee's recommendations?
Not one bit.
Just take.
If I had a hard copy, I would have done it, but I, I'm getting blind.
Yep, no problem. And what I'm going to read now is the town of Winslow. The ambulance committee recommendations prepared by Michael Heaven are dated April seventh, two thousand twenty. Committee members present at the March twenty-third meeting was Steve Russell, Jeff Russ, Tim Beals, Dennis Brockway, Fran Hudson, Chief Rodriguez and Fire Chief Lieutenant Jeff Rainey, Fire Lieutenant, I'm sorry. The ambulance, the ambulance committee met on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty via Zoom and discussed the attached proposed from the fire chief to buy two used ambulance to begin doing patient transports to the hospital as a continuation of the EMS service, service currently provided. During the meeting, Fire Chief Rodriguez said fire department capital funds could be used to fund the initial purchases needed to start the ambulance transport service. It is generally known that the fire service-based emergency medical services EMS systems are strategically positioned to deliver time-critical response and effective patient care, and Winslow is no exception. Currently Winslow's providers, providers EMT and advanced EMTs respond to EMS calls and treat their patients. If the patient needs to be transported to the hospital, then a private ambulance service or mutual aid partner does the transport. The average response time for Winslow EMTs to arrive on scene during the past six months is three point one seven minutes. The average response time for the private ambulance service during the same time period is eight point two four minutes. In addition, five Winslow providers are currently enrolled at KVCC, working towards earning their paramedic license. Once achieved, Winslow will have at least one paramedic per shift. Another fact to consider is that approximately seventy-one percent of Winslow's calls for service are EMS calls. Despite that fact, Winslow does not have the resources to transport their patients to a hospital. They must rely on a private ambulance service or mutual aid partner to perform that function, which may not always be available. Recommendation, as we just read in the order, the ambulance committee voted four to two to recommend to the Winslow town council that the town implement Fire Chief Rodriguez attached proposal, use ambulance purchase and begin transporting the fire department patients to the hospital when necessary.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yep, go ahead, Ben.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this ambulance item until we get more information. I've had many calls this week due to this, and I don't feel we have enough information to make the vote.
I would like to know what information you feel is miss, is missing.
I have a lot of data here on, on the sheet, if you want, got the rest of the night. I'm just making a motion that we table.
Right, and I'm saying that I want to know what information you feel is missing, and I think it should be emailed to the entire council so all questions can be answered, because I personally feel like we've been playing this game for eighteen months. And although I am, I'm fine with waiting till Monday, there's a lot of people spreading misinformation online and a lot of people that still don't have the information that they, we've put out there. So I think that we should have a specific list of information that you feel like we're missing so that it can be addressed.
I can't, I can't cover a few of them right now. I mean, I've been getting calls every day, several calls a day. I've had just one positive call. All the people I'm getting calls from say, we're kind of rushing into this and we ought to back off just a little, get more data, and before we push this through.
I understand. So what data is missing? And do any of the people that have been calling you saying that they want to wait, have any family members or friends directly working with Delta or for Delta, or do them say?
No, not one.
For a fact.
Not one, I know for a fact.
Okay.
Ben?
Yes.
Are you okay with the side of the ledger on the income, those numbers?
Oh, what are you talking about? You mean the, the sheet that the chief sent out?
Well, the, the income side of the ledger that the chief has in the chief's proposal where he put in two fifty and seven hundred calls. Are you okay with that side of the equation?
I don't have that sheet. I've got the used ambulance purchase and I have the Delta, number of EMS calls. I do not have that information, Steve.
Well, it's only the two numbers. It's, he put in an estimation of what we would get paid for a trip and he put in the estimated number of trips.
Yeah, to do, he put two, he put in two hundred and fifty dollars per trip.
Right, and so I'm, I'm asking you a question. You're not dissatisfied with that side of the ledger, right? Your questions come from the other side, the cause.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
I want to clear that up. Thank you.
Yep.
I, I'm not trying to argue. I just want to be very clear and say what information is missing? What do people want to know? And I want questions written out so we can address them, because there was a specific committee made to address all these concerns, including the chief that has gone above and beyond to put facts and figures and numbers. So if anyone is confused or has concern, I want to be able to say, this is your question, here's the answer, here's the answer, here's the answer. I want to provide the information. We've been doing this for eighteen months. In my opinion, we have gone above and beyond to put the information out there in many, many different avenues. And so I just want to make sure that what specific questions people have, so we can give them specific answers.
And that's one opinion, but online, you're talking about all this online stuff, which you're very active with. But there's two or three things online that have me confused now. I understood, and I'm also going to give this out now while I'm arguing the point. I understood that Delta was concerned they were not going to be able to transport our people during this pandemic. I saw the letter also online stating they had the ambulances and the people, and not to worry about it, they would take care of us. So that kind of threw, threw me off on the left-hand side of this situation. The fact I thought we had three men per shift, I find out we get two people short right now. There's been.
You still have, you still have three men per shift. We're just short overall to, to positions that haven't been hired yet.
But how do we have, but we don't have actually three men on a shift.
You still have your three, three personnel on shift.
How do you do that with, when you only get seven people? We, we need nine to do that.
Same way we've always done it. You backfill the position until you fill your, until you hire your new personnel.
Now, I do know for a fact that there has been requests for answers to different items that have not been answered.
By who, from who? Be specific, please. What answer, what answers do people need? What questions have been asked that have not been answered?
You, are you reading the stuff online as well as I am?
Yeah, I'm like super involved online. That's all, that's all I do during the day. I feel like I'm not even working. I'm just answering stuff online. All the information was posted.
Ken Fletcher put a whole list of questions. Ken Fletcher put a whole list of questions on there that he would like to have answered. I get somebody tell me, well, he's not a counselor. Somebody says he's not a counselor.
Correct.
But I'm making a difference. He's the public person living in Winslow. He has the right to get these answers.
I don't have a problem with Ken, I don't have a problem with Ken Fletcher asking questions. It's not my responsibility, it's not my responsibility to answer them.
Just, just.
Didn't you respond to his questions?
Yeah.
Yes, I did, to an email, I think, just the other day. But I, I think he may have more questions, some that I think he had perhaps asked back in November.
I haven't seen those recently, anyway.
From November, he asked questions that weren't answered? Is that what he's saying?
I believe so, yes.
But you just answered questions from an email that we received two days ago? I saw the responses.
Yes, correct, I did.
Okay, and he has all the information from the committee with all the facts and figures from it?
Here is, here is my, my thoughts on that matter. You know, we are, we are really in unprecedented times here, and even the council at times has struggled for communication issues that we're doing here. If we're struggling sometime during, you know, we had a Zoom meeting on the last ambulance committee meeting, and now we're doing Zoom meetings, and granted, we are getting information out to the public. But I don't, I think during this time is challenging to get this information out to the public. We have been involved, like with many other issues. We are engrossed in it and we know the fine details, but yet it's always at the last minute is when the public is being weighed on those type of issues also. And those are the times that we, we have to, if we feel that these issues or some of the answers are not answered, some of the questions are not answered, that we need to sit back a little bit. And, you know, last week we were almost ready, and maybe we are, and I'm of having a vote tonight and then bypassing the second vote and tonight, and, you know, I'm, I'm trying to avoid that right now because I don't think that that would be right, and I think the public has some concern with the pair, with the COVID nineteen and not being able to respond or take input. So I think that's a legitimate reason.
I agree, Ray, but we've, we've been doing this for eighteen months. We've had a committee. It's been public. It's been on Facebook and YouTube and TV and the newspaper and the town council, and it's been on the agenda and it's been in the town office. It's been everywhere. We've been cramming it down people's throats. And now they have concerns when a majority of the concerns have already been addressed. My specific question to Ben Twitchell is, you had people say that they don't have enough information. What information is missing? What specific information do you need? It's not up for debate, like what figures do you need? Because the chief did a really good job going through everything and being very specific. So I want to know, because I want to address concerns just like everybody else does. What are the concerns? What are the questions so that we can get the answers? Because at this point, we're beating a dead horse, in my opinion, because the information, I mean, this is why we're doing this. This is why I'm sitting here in my office with my phone like this. We are more interactive with people in Winslow than we've ever been in the last five years I've been on the council. I am live right now. We have, we're reaching, we have three hundred people on this. We're looking at this right now, being in, interacting with this. This is the most interactive we've been in five years. So I, I guess I specifically want to know what information they're missing, because it's like repeating and repeating and repeating and repeating.
All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, Tish, there are people calling that want more information. I don't have it, all right?
And that's fine.
But they don't have a chance to voice, they don't have a chance to voice their opinion.
That's fine. That they should email you questions so we can get them addressed. They can't just say, I have concerns. What are your concerns? We can't move forward unless we specifically know what information they're missing. Because Lee posted on Facebook all of the information with all of the facts and figures. The chief's provided all the numbers to us. All of that's been online, on our website, everywhere. I want to specifically know what people's concerns are.
Then why not we table this till we get the information?
Do you think that we're going to get the information and by Monday?
Who knows?
I don't, let's, let's just hold back a minute for just a minute, please, if, if, is, I think right now is that, you know, the article in the paper and this being viewed by many people and the word will get out is that that will generate some questions over the next couple of days. We'll get a list of those, you know, I recommend that anybody listening or anybody that's in, that's out in, watching on the TV formulate some questions, either email them to the town office or email them to your council member. We'll get a list of questions that we can get together. And then at Monday's meeting, we can look at those questions, or maybe the chief at that point in time might have, or Mike might have some time to review those, those type of questions. And then we can address the questions, it's a legitimate question. So I think we should look at them. I think we should address them, and there might be something that we've missed here.
I agree. I'm all for giving information to people. Again, this is why I'm sitting here doing this right now. I'm all for providing information for people. My frustration is that they say that they're not getting information. What information are you missing? What questions do you need answered? Because we've gone over this and we have a lot of facts and figures up there that have been advertised to people. Have they done their research? Have they looked online? Have they looked on our website? Have they looked at the information that the chief provided? There's a difference between just being mad about it and, and not having the information. And I want to find out what information they're missing.
I have a motion on the floor. And do I have a second on my motion?
Ray, this is jury.
Yeah.
The article in the paper generated a lot of questions from the public. And I'll second Ben's motion to move it forward or backwards, whatever.
So, nevermind.
We have, we have a motion right now on the floor that says that, that we would like to table this till Monday, generate some more, generate some questions and then try to get some answers to those questions before Monday night. That is what the motion has been seconded on the floor. If somebody has some, is, Michael, is the chief on right now too?
Yes, he is.
It, it is. If, if somebody has, like I have a few questions that I would like to ask the chief too during this time. And does anybody else have some questions that they would like to ask the chief? And try to, to get this away from, you know, the, what we, what we need to do. Does anybody have any questions right now?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm not opposed to tabling this until Monday, but I don't want that just to be a stall act. I want specific questions asked, you know, if you have concerns about, I assume the concerns seem to be from the cost side of the equation. And so if we confirm up those numbers, I think that would answer a lot of questions. I know that for myself, going to two ambulances was different than what we started with. We talked about one. I don't know if that's an option we can look at. Certainly that doubled our startup costs and the first year costs, which has also put a little bit more of a dent in what our cash flow is going to be. And so perhaps those are things we can look at, but I want to make sure that if we postpone this to Monday, that we get the questions asked and answered prior to that. Thank you.
Yep. And if I might add, one of the questions that I've always asked the chief and, chief, can you hear right now?
Yes, sir. I, I've been, I've been here and I've been listening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You know that I've always, right now for the current staffing level on the Winslow Fire Department is that we have no full-time paramedics. Is that correct?
Currently, we have no full-time paramedic. That is correct.
And they're going to take the course, five, five firefighters are taking the paramedic course through the summer. Is that correct?
That is correct. It started, I want to say in February, and it ends, concludes in December.
Yeah.
And we're still, and, and the COVID situation has not postponed or delayed the class. We're still marching forward with the class.
Okay, and chief, before I ask my next question, if I could say this also is, is, you know, when you came on board on the Winslow council directed you to do exactly what you have done. You have, you have done exactly to investigate the possibilities of transportation for revenue generation, because we are in really an unsustainable, unsustainable situation with revenues and versus the cost of providing fire service and ENF service. So you have done exactly what we've asked you to do and we thank you for that also. So the questions also that I ask are, you know, from citizens of the town of Winslow too. And it's not as a, a judgment on what you're doing or your job that you're doing. I want to make that perfectly clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate your comments and, and I, I don't, I, I don't take anything personally. I'm just doing my job and I understand that this is something new that might be new to this, to this area, but it's not a new concept to the fire service at all. In fact, the majority of the nation is served by fire-based EMS systems. And in fact, the majority of the state of Maine, the municipality, the majority of the municipalities in the state of Maine are served by a fire-based EMS system.
So it's not just, it's not just in Virginia, because that's one of the major comments that I've been hearing and personal attacks against you, chief, that I'm really not okay with, that I find extremely disrespectful, that there's, you're a big wig fire chief coming from Virginia. So I just want to clarify that there are other places in Maine that use this ambulance service. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that, that's correct. And, and I've never, I, I don't carry myself that way as some big wig. I'm just a regular guy.
Yeah.
I don't feel like that.
So chief, my question is, at this point, is during, there will be a period of time before we're up into the paramedic, be able to provide paramedic service from the town of Winslow. So we're advanced EMT and then eventually you want to be certified that every call that's, that we go out of the station is paramedic level, level trained. Is that correct? How long will it be between the advanced EMT and then the paramedic level? Do you feel we'll have the paramedic service available?
Well, the, the paramedic, the, the class ends in December, which will be followed up by testing. The minute we pass the test, we will be certified at the paramedic level. We, we're running all the calls right now, and I understand the paramedic concern on, on some people's list of questions. We have means and methods to provide paramedic level care until we obtain licensing from, from, from our own personnel.
Yeah.
I get a question, chief.
Go ahead, Ben.
I understand that after you get through your course, you still have sixty hours per paramedic to get the certification. Is that correct?
I, I don't, I don't know. No, we, we get all our, when, when we finish the class, we're, we're eligible to sit for the test. For, there's two tests, practical and written, and once we pass those tests, we receive our certification, a nationally registered certification. And through the chair, if I may, I, Mr. Mr. Twitchell did bring up some questions that I think I could maybe clarify right now for him with, with regards to, to our current staffing level. We have, we are budgeted for nine, actually twelve, if we got the safer grant, but we are budgeted for nine positions and we have one vacancy, which is the result of an untimely death. So that is the one vacancy that we have. We just completed a, a, a captain's process and we're in the middle of evaluating the candidates right now.
So you have replaced one of those two seats then, chief, right?
That is correct. So we, we, of the nine active positions, we are running, we have eight.
Chief, this is, this is Ray Karen again. Who will, could you explain the hierarchy of the mutual aid system that we have now? And what do you feel the mutual aid system will be if Winslow's on a call? Who will be our backup? Could you explain that, please?
With regards to the EMS service?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, currently, our mutual aid partner is Delta Ambulance. We work cooperatively together and I, it is my goal that we continue to operate in a cooperative spirit. I just, I'm, I'm looking, as, as you mentioned earlier, I'm, I'm looking for ways to help offset the, the cost to operate emergency services within the town of Winslow. So my future projection would be that we would continue the mutual aid agreements that we would have with Delta and our mutual aid county, not county, forgive me, surrounding towns and communities that we currently have mutual aid agreements with.
Do we have to negotiate mutual aid agreements or are they, is it something that's a given? Or is it something that we would need to have in writing that now Delta would be a mutual aid partner?
Well, we would, there is, that's a great question. There is, we currently have mutual aid agreements with all, all the surrounding jurisdictions. There is no, there is no agreement of any kind with Delta right now. I don't, I don't foresee a problem of working cooperatively with them. You know, I, I've maintained all along that we're, we're a team and there's no secret that the region is short. That's why we're going to the, the paramedic level, that there is no, it's been highly, I don't want to say advertised, but written about in the papers and periodicals about how the state of Maine is short EMS providers and I'm trying to get ours to the, to the, to the highest standard. And, you know, that takes time. We've done it through grant funding and so, so my goal has always been to bring more, more personnel, more skilled personnel to our region. And with, with bringing, with the adding of a transport service to, to Winslow, we have now increased the transport capabilities of the region. It, it doesn't take too many multi-car accidents to overwhelm the transport service. And, and when I'm, when I talk about this. It it doesn't take too many uh multi-car accidents to overwhelm the transport service and 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 when I'm, when I talk about this, I am not trying to disparage Delta Ambulance Corp- Corporation in any way whatsoever. But when you have a bus rollover on ninety-five with thirty-one people and we're calling transport units from Pittsfield uh and north to come provide transport, that to me is uh an indicator that we are, we are lacking um significant resources to to mitigate uh uh a situation. And it I equate it similarly to um you go grocery shopping and there's a lot of people in line and you see a lot of cash registers. Well, don't you wish there's another cashier to open the line so that people could go through the the uh to to check out and um so that's my, that's been my goal all along is to be, is to solve um help solve a problem for for a lack of resources within the region and also provide a revenue, uh an additional revis- potential revenue stream. Obviously, you can't predict how um, I mean, I hope nobody ever calls nine one one, but past practice and past statistics indicate on average over the last five years that we have approximately seven hundred transports out of the town of Winslow to local hospitals. And that's my goal is to help offset the cost of emergency services uh within the town of Winslow. Because it 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 does cost a lot of money and the fact of the matter is, that's why there is uh medical reimbursement provisions so that towns like ours can sustain uh the emergency medical, not just emergency medical services, but emergency services.
In in your budget calculations, chief, um I know that right now, uh would there be a tier type of system for basic E M T would get a certain amount of pay? Advanced E M T would get a pay and paramedic would get a pay. Uh, and do you foresee in your budget calculations that that's that's that highest, what do you think would be the highest pay that a paramedic would get in this area compared to what we're paying now? Would that upset some of the gains that that we would, we would, that you're predicting to retain paramedics? Are we gonna have a hard time retaining them once we train them?
That's a great question. Uh, I have, uh, in fact, I've implemented with the union's agreement, a contract for those that have are going through the class, that they will commit to being with Winslow for five years post-graduation or certification from the paramedic class. So we won't be, we uh if if I'm understanding what you're asking, are we, are we training people to go work someplace else to make more money? Uh, I I I can't, I can't speak to um wages because that's that's a, that's a union contract negotiation between the union and and the town. Um
I have a whole bar of questions.
I'm not trying to dodge the question. I just that that's that's not a that that's not something that it's out of the scope of my my uh jurisdiction.
That's fine. That's fine.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep, go ahead, Trish. Yep.
Okay, um, so one of them is if we have an ambulance service and we vote to have this forward, taxes will not be raised because of that, correct, Ray?
You asking me?
I'm asking you as the chairman, yes, and the budget. We are putting forward the ambulance, but that's not going to be raising taxes. Correct? Mike, if you want to answer that?
We have, we have. Yeah, go ahead, Mike. Yeah, I think you're better at that than I am.
Yeah, so um uh purchasing the ambulances now will not have an impact on on the on the budget.
Okay, that was a huge question. So thank you for answering that. Um, through the chair, Ray, if I could ask chief this question. Currently, we do not need a paramedic on shift to have the ambulance service, correct?
Uh, through the chair, that is correct. We do not need a paramedic.
And is it true that Delta does not have a paramedic on every shift as well?
I cannot, I cannot speak to their staffing, whether what their minimum staffing level is. I I I can't, I can't address that.
Can can I touch on that, please?
Sure, Jeff. Be my guest.
Delta is a paramedic service. They're permitted at the paramedic level, not up to. So any emergency call, they have to have a paramedic.
That was another concern, so thank you for addressing that. Um, do we know why Waterville hasn't started their uh ambulance service?
Through the chair, is that, was that directed towards me?
I believe so.
Anybody, I'm, that was one of the questions that were asked, like Wat- Waterville is doing and if our decision hinders on Waterville or in any way affects what they're doing.
Well, through through the chair, w- we're we're a different, we're a different entity and I can't, I can't I can't speak for for Waterville. Uh, I know it's been publicized that they uh they offered it up for a different type of agreement than what I, what my, what my proposal is. But there, I can't speak for the city of Waterville. They're they're totally separate entity.
Ray, I just have one more follow-up question. Is that okay?
Oh, for sure, Trish.
Sorry. Um, chief.
No, that's what we're here for. We're here to to answer, we're here to ask questions and we're here to try to provide some answers for the citizens that are watching and that's what we do.
In your opinion, chief, what is the main reason why we as Winslow are getting a fired, um, getting the ambulance service for the fire department? What what are you hoping to achieve and what goals are we um hoping to reach with this?
That that's a great question. Uh, but the the goal is a faster response and transport to the hospital.
And we have figures, correct? We have information to back up the delays and we have hard facts about that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Through the chair, can I ask them some questions?
Be my guest, Steve.
Um, chief, you mentioned there were several other communities in Maine that that have this base system, this EMS fire system. Um, most of the questions that I've heard uh seem to come from questioning your figures on the cost of running the service. I'm wondering when when you were putting together your spreadsheet, did you contact some of those other chiefs that were running these EMS? Have you, were they, did they make you privy to their information, their financial information? Did you use their information to help you build your spreadsheet?
That uh through the chair, thank you for that question. I I have contacted other chiefs um from various sides departments and they they have been free with their information uh to me. Um however, I think the best source that uh comes, that has come to me for for basing my um estimates for revenue um came from the medical reimbursements, the third-party billing company that represents the majority of the municipalities that do uh EMS transport and um in his, in his uh reply to me, um he he gave me the payer mix breakdown, those that are on Medicare, those that are on uh Medicaid, those that are private insurance and those that are self-pay. And also in 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 his uh letter to me where I can quote the letters, for these clients, the average reimbursement for each transport is between four hundred and five and four hundred and fifteen dollars a call. Those are his numbers based on what he has seen for towns our size um going through his service. Um, he uh quoted me the cost for our service for someone of your size is about six percent of the money's collected and a one-time setup fee of six hundred dollars. This is um was dated last fall, October twenty nineteen. So my numbers that I use for revenue are 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 understated. And he he quotes four hundred and five to four hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, I'm I'm using two hundred and fifty dollars a call, not including loaded mile.
Chief, can I, can I, so I'm sorry, can I interrupt you for one minute?
Sure.
Um, chief, when you originally put this together, uh, what was the initial figure you were using? Three fifty, was it?
I I don't have that spreadsheet in front of me, but I I think it was around the three hundred to three fifty. Yes, sir.
Okay, and if my memory recalls, you were told there's no way you'll ever see that.
That's correct.
So then you went on, you continued on dropping the price and dropping the price and kept being told you'll never see those numbers. So you said, you know what? Let's go two fifty a call. The statement that was made by one of the opponents that was on this committee was, well, that's actually a little low. Am I correct in my statement?
I seem to recall that statement. Yes, sir.
Could anybody else that was either on the committee or in attendance back that up for me?
Yeah, I believe that's how the conversation went. Um, but the the concerns I've had um from the public has not been on that side of the equation. Most people agree, I think, that we are lowballing our income and we did that on purpose to protect ourselves. What they're, what they're afraid of is that the chief has been lowballing the cost side of the equation. And I wanted to make sure that he had correct information at his fingertips when he built that spreadsheet and he used that information that he gathered from other communities like Winslow that have started an EMS space system and 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 that those figures are legitimate.
No, under understandable. Um, I I believe, you know, we've, the figures that have been put out there, you know, the cost of said ambulance or used ambulance, um, the cost of the stretchers
Right.
and whatnot. I mean, those are I mean, chief's been pretty accurate with those, I would have to say. I mean, any one of us can go say what a used ambulance costs.
How old are the ambulances?
Chief. Sir?
How old are the ambulances that you're thinking about?
Through through the chair, I if uh at the, if if I may, uh Chair, uh Counselor Russell asked some questions that I'd like to answer.
Be my guest. Be my permission to just answer them freely, please. Yep.
Well, I'm I'm trying to follow the, you know, protocol and Robert's rules of order. Um, we're we're Yes, sir. With regards to my uh my, the cost side of my uh spreadsheet, I have um the line item for the ambulances. I've and at the ca- and at the council's dis- uh uh direction from last the last meeting, I was told to prepare and 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 go out and discover and find and and I actually have, I found two used ambulances. One is a two thousand ten with seventy-five thousand miles. It's a diesel engine, a GMC Duramax diesel engine. Uh, I found a two thousand fourteen with ninety-one thousand miles on it that is a also a GMC Duramax diesel. And um but in terms, and I've got hard, hard quotes for those two units. Um, I have from Maine Municipal, the cost to operate, um, the liability insurance is um the, I'm sorry, correction, the me- the medical malpractice cost for a transport service is one thousand thirty-four dollars for the first ambulance, eight hundred and forty-six dollars for the sec- thing, um eighteen eighty for the cost of malpractice uh for two ambulances. And the cost of of the liability on the vehicles would be twelve hundred dollars per ambulance. So that's how I came up with my insurance line. The maintenance line, uh, as I've stated, that's, you know, that's up in the air. Um, but the medical director cost, I have the contract, a a draft contract in previous discussions with the medical director who's willing to come on board and do our QI um is the, he he wants two dollars a call. I budgeted three dollars a call. The uh the capital equipment of the uh the stretcher and stair chairs, I actually have the the quote from um the the ma- the uh sales rep manufacturer, um, uh, you know, that quotes it. So everything that I've I've listed, the EMS supplies we've gotten from the vendors, uh, the quotes from the vendors to stock one or two. Um, and then um the billing fees based on based on what the the number of transports and two fifty a transport at six uh six percent is ten thousand five hundred dollars. So I have, I've got, I I've I've got the documentation for everything that I put on my spreadsheet to 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 satisfy the the cost side of the the um the equipment for this um venture. I I I would like to also through the chair, if I may, mention that we're already running all these calls. We're on every one of these calls right now and we're the ones that are providing the the immediate mitigating um care for the patients that we that are in our town.
I have a question.
Wait a minute, just, yeah, just if I could just add, yeah, uh, I'll go with Trish and then with Ben after, but I just got a quick question. Chief, uh, would you continue to run the rescue truck? Or how would that equipment hierarchy, could we use, would would we retire that truck and use the maintenance on that truck to uh to uh um as part of the maintenance cost for the new ambulances or does that truck still stay in service for specific functions?
That's an excellent question and I'm willing to look at any and all options. Uh, certainly, that is a capital uh asset that we could uh I'd have to look and see what it would sell for, but that is certainly an option that we combine um the equipment that is on the rescue onto the new engine.
Okay, on the new engine or the new ambulance or?
The new engine.
New engine. So I've seen at a traffic accident, do we, would we roll a fire truck and the ambulance? Is that the way it works now?
Yes.
Okay. So we would only need certain equipment on the truck? We wouldn't have to roll it to every EMS call then?
That is correct.
Uh, Trish, do you have a question and then Ben?
I've got, I have just a couple of questions. Do we currently have space to um keep the ambulances? That was one of the questions that was asked. Chief, sorry.
Yeah, that's a great question. We do.
Okay.
And 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 provisions have been um made with the with the plans of the renovation of the new station to to be able to house two ambulances.
Okay, so one of the comments that was made was, well, now we need a new fire station. That committee has already been in the works. We have already been speaking about that. I'm actually on the committee. Um, so that's already been in the works prior to this decision. I mean, they they're really not related. In my mind, they're two separate topics. Um, the fire station was built uh well, over fifty years ago. So there's renovations that need to be made there and those are two separate topics. Correct?
Uh, through the chair, I, if if I can read between the lines, this is not an ulterior motive of mine to get me in the in the the staff here a new station.
Thank you.
Whether whether we get a new, uh, in in my opinion, right, as the chief, whether we get a new, uh, wh- whether we implement the ambulance uh transport service for the town of Winslow or not, the the facilities here were never designed uh from the history buffs that I've talked to for twenty-four hour uh staffing. And I can tell you right now, we are, we are, we're out of room. We we have no place for us to check out the current ladder truck that we have. We have to go to an off-site facility because of the power lines. There's power lines on all four sides. There's uh there's um so I understand how the correlation is being drafted and that it 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 can be skewed that I'm, I am trying to uh use this as a means to get a new station built and that is not the case. When when I was hired, the 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 um the station was already in 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 the works. The the discussion was already in the works about whether we get a new station or whether we renovate, so.
Yeah, we'll we'll have that. Well, that's a good point and but.
Somebody brought it up, so I wanted to say it because we've been talking about it for several years now and it has nothing to do with Chief Rodriguez and it has nothing to do with the ambulance service. So I wanted to make that point online for everyone here.
Just for clarity, Ray, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff. I got Ben on the, Ben on the line too, so.
Yeah, this this is really, this is this is related to what what we're talking about at the moment. Uh, Mike, what has it been? Almost over two years now that the renovation was started to be talked about?
Yes, yes.
I I just wanted to make that point very clear to anybody and everybody that this has nothing to do with this or with our our new chief, who wasn't even, uh, he was down in sunny Virginia back then.
Ben, do you have something?
Yes, I asked the the chief a minute ago, have you got a cost for each of these ambulances?
I'm sorry, I'm pushing buttons, trying to mute so we don't have feedback and stuff and I'm hitting the wrong one. The the two ambulances that I've looked at, I I do, I do have costs for those. One, one is at fifty eight thousand and the other is at twenty nine five.
Twenty nine five.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Through the chair, can I ask another question, Ray?
You might guess, Steve.
Um, when we first begin. This progress, Jack, if we went to that. Or or do you need the second one as a backup when you're buying used units?
Uh, through the chair, I did, he broke up. I didn't hear him.
I didn't hear you.
Uh, I'll try it again. Uh, maybe I'm losing my internet. I don't know. Everybody on this road's on the on the internet at the same time. It seems like the last couple of weeks. I was wondering if our original proposal was one rescue unit as a starter. Would you object if we went back to that? Do you need the second one as a backup where we're buying used?
I I'm not opposed to uh to starting with one, not at all.
I don't know if if the other counselors think that that's an option. I guess I guess I would say I'd rather start with one than have zero or, you know, try to start with two and end up with zero. It would make more sense to me to get this off the ground, have a year to look at at it and make sure that um our assumptions were correct, finding financial assumptions were correct. Um, it would be less of a debt into our operating costs that first year and and it'd make the turnaround a little quicker on recovering those costs. Uh, it's just an idea. I thought I'd throw it out and see if anybody else agrees with that.
Yeah, Steve, if if I could, I I guess, um, you know, and I I'm not necessarily in favor. I think if we go into the transportation business, then we have to have a certain level of competency that we're going to answer every call that we can if we're not if we're not busy on another call, but I think that given the the mechanics of the situation, and this is just my opinion, is that we really need to have, I think, a backup unit just because of maybe the length of time depending on where it is, but I I think if we go into it, we we have to be consistent and we have to ensure that for the most part, we will not be relying on a mutual aid partner and that we're the primary caregiver under the conditions that we might break down one of the units, another unit could come online. That's just my opinion. Uh, does any counselors have any other opinion on that issue?
I agree too. You always need a backup, so and I'm seeing a lot of comments about that as well.
And I want to say I'm not against ambulance service. The only complaints I'm getting is the fact that the people have not had a chance to weigh in. That's my only complaint. Oh, really?
I I have one question for the chief um along the lines of the two versus one. Does Sugarloaf ever supply a demo unit? If, say, our unit was going to go down for more than a day, let's say?
Through the chair, if I understand your question, you're wanting to know if whoever we purchase the the vehicles from, if they provide a a loner type vehicle?
Yeah, if we if we were to go down, you know, say we had something go on with with that current, with the rig that we purchased and we're going to be down for two to three days for repairs if they would have or have a loner unit available.
Yes. I've been given that. I've been given that assurance. Yes.
Just a ju- just food for thought. That's all I'm throwing out there with that one.
Well, I have a question.
Be my guest, Jerry.
And that question is, what condition are these two used ambulances? Have they got been uh inspected by a mech- one of our mechanics? I'd hate to find out after three or four years or five years that we're having, we can't um pass state inspection.
That's an excellent question and at the direction of the council, when I was uh when I went out and did my due diligence to to find us um some some units, uh, I have personally inspected these and they're like brand new. I I I'm not, I'm not lying. Uh, the the two thousand ten was on a from a community that replaces their ambulances on a ten year cycle and it's got, that's why it only has it from a small community, seventy five thousand miles on it, but it is, it is, it's it's in great shape. It's got a power load cot on it. The uh OT cylinder's got a a lift, so it is for for its for the year that it was manufactured, it's got a lot of the options that are I want to say standard now and I I've looked at them and I can tell you the first thing I looked at, I got underneath and I looked at that frame. So I share your concerns and um I I wouldn't, I wouldn't do anything in terms of buying a unit just to buy a unit so we could get this off the ground. I've I've got my reputation on the line here as well. I'm putting my name behind this. So I I, you know, I know people are watching and if this thing doesn't do what I project, um, it's going to come back to me and I realize that. So that's that's the only um that's the only stake I've got in the game is is my name and and I I I I gain nothing uh but from from implementing this service within the town of Winslow.
So would it be any more difficult to have a um certified state inspection mechanic look at them? To back you up?
Through the chair, the 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 i- if I was to be authorized to purchase one or two, three, five, ten, I wouldn't get anything that it didn't receive a a state inspection.
Chief, um, it's it is, again, this is just my opinion, but I think that that maintenance, you know, your maintenance budget of five thousand dollars, to me, that's a little low. That's just 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 me saying, I would say I would be more comfortable with doubling that. It's not just for safety wise, but you know, just general maintenance on them, oil changes and everything, three or four times a year. Is that correct? Tires, all that type of stuff. Does that include all that stuff in that five thousand dollar maintenance budget?
The current vehicles I've looked at, uh, that's an excellent question, have brand new tires on it, have um the the maintenance on them has been done. Like I said, a diesel engine really isn't broken in until it hits about two hundred thousand miles and the one, the 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 newer one has the most mileage on it at ninety thousand. Um, I I'm, that is, that is a a variable number and that can that can depend unless you buy a brand new one, you know, you're going to have maintenance costs. So I would agree with you that that is a um a variable, but I think based on the amount of money that I've adjusted for the trans- the transport fee, I think I think that's been absorbed pretty well in the uh on the revenue side, but if 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 you wanted me to bump it up to twenty thousand dollars a year, I think that would be high, but I can do that.
I'm just, I I'm just stating just my opinion on that is that that, you know, I'm not saying it has to be tripled, that's for sure, but it seems like, you know, you have a I I know that they're they're high tech, high tech things electrically and uh, you know what I mean? They do, they do run some maintenance issues sometimes.
I I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
If you have an issue, it's not usually, oh, uh, you know, an off the shelf item or it can be, but they're usually pretty expensive type of stuff, you know, that that that.
One of the questions I got is if we've used data from other towns in regards to their maintenance line item in their budget and what they've seen for problems. Have we asked for that information?
Great question. I have asked for that information and that's tough. That's a tough one to decipher because various towns, some of them, um, they they're on a lease program and they 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 get a new uh unit every three to five years, you know, they because this is successful. They are, I I've talked to a chief who's uh putting in in addition on his fire station to the tune of eighty thousand dollars and it's being funded by the revenue of the enterprise account, if you will, the revenue from his transport service. So I I it's a hard to gauge what somebody else's maintenance is because I don't know how they drive. I don't know how many miles they're putting on and I don't know how many calls a year they're running and where they're transporting to, so.
Correct.
Uh, that's why it's, that's why it's such a variable.
Well, it's hard to compare our town to other towns and sometimes we don't like to do that for obvious reasons because we're different. Um, but I just wanted to know if you had researched that. Um, one of the other major questions I keep getting is what if people um aren't paying us? How do we handle that? Are we writing off that debt? Um, that was a question that's been brought up a couple of times. So how do we handle that?
That's a great question. I am, I am not a bill collector and I am not out to to do anything but provide a service. I'm an emergency service and if people are able to pay, then then we get reimbursed. If they're not, I am not, I am not trying to uh take anybody to court, get a collection agency after anybody, get them on a payment plan or anything like that. I'm trying to complete the service that we started and getting getting the 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 key is for me is providing patient care and getting them to definitive service, uh, definitive care as soon as possible.
So that would affect our revenue line because maybe we're unsure and and I think it is hard to figure out what the revenue would be because you don't know um if people have insurance, if they're going to pay us, you know, that sort of thing.
That's an excellent question and that's why I didn't use four hundred dollars a transport. That's also why I didn't use three hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars a transport. I think I think the two hundred and fifty dollars a transport, as uh as Mr. West has said, that it is an extremely conservative number and I did that on purpose because I wanted to have credibility and I wanted to make sure that we did have adjustments or make uh uh concessions for those that might not be able to pay.
And do we have contracts with insurance companies? Sorry, Jeff.
That would, that would, that's, that would be taken care of with the uh third party billing company.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Trish, on on that line, um, I spoke to I I actually ran into a chief of a service the other day. Took in a hundred sixty thousand dollars in revenue last year. That included his bad debt. On four hundred calls.
Ben, do you have something?
Yeah, I was wondering, what what, do you have any idea, Chief, what like Medicare pays for our transport? What what the maximum?
Uh, well, that depends on how you bill it. So Maine Care and Medicare is sixty five percent.
So I mean, the customer that we transport will have to pay the difference.
That's how it's set up, but I'm not going after, like I said, I'm trying to provide a service. I'm not trying to become a bill collector or go after, I I'm not, I'm not, that's why I set the two fifty mark because I want to take into account those that can't afford. That to me is a shame. I I don't want somebody to hesitate to call for help because they're afraid they can't afford to go be transported to the hospital and we have received those phone calls. We've received a phone call not too long ago from somebody whose wife needed to go from uh a local hospital to a nursing care facility for rehab and they were concerned because they couldn't afford the transport fee. That's why I use this two fifty uh number. I want to take care of the citizens of Winslow.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for that, Dan.
Yes, sir.
I have two follow up questions if I can.
Yeah, you get, I just want to get one quick question uh first, Trish, if I could.
Yeah, that's fine.
Chief, right now is that currently Delta does transportation between interhospital transportation, like they'll go to Portland. They'll go to EMS and Bangor and Central Maine and even, uh, of course, Boston, they go all over the country, actually. We're just in the town of Winslow looking at nine eleven calls. Is that correct or?
Yes, sir. I'm not, I'm not interested in getting into interfacility transports or transfers or anything like that. I am, I am strictly looking to provide a means for our citizens to get to the hospital provided by the people that they that that work for for Winslow Fire Rescue.
And what are the what are the hospitals that we'll be transporting to?
We have Thayer, Inland, we have Augusta. That's where we would be going to. Skowhegan if necessary. But if if people are concerned that we would be taking a patient to Portland, that's that's not within protocol. The if, what the protocol calls for is getting the patient to the closest definitive hospital. And once the patient is there and stabilized and they need additional definitive care someplace else, that's when organizations that have uh interfacility transfer and transport licenses comes in and they go take them and that's why, to to back up what you're saying, that's why, you know, Delta does do what they do. They take them and they take them from Thayer or Inland to Portland, wherever they need to go for definitive care. That's not, I'm not trying to take our our people and put them into this, that realm. That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm, that's not what, that's not my game.
No, I'm just trying to get a definitive where, what we're going to be handling for calls.
Yeah.
Which is.
Trish, do you have something?
Yeah, that leads into one of my questions um that somebody had. Can we offer our services elsewhere? You know, would we be offering any sort of mutual aid? Would we be going to Skowhegan? Um, obviously, your main purpose and goal, which you've said multiple times, is take care of the people here in Winslow. But could we expand on that at any point for additional revenue um or resources?
I am not going to um not help our neighbors if they call for help. Obviously, if we're available and we get a call for help, that's what mutual aid is. And we receive mutual aid all the time from uh neighboring communities when we need, when we have an incident that we can't mitigate. If one of our mutual aid communities needs needs assistance, that's what, that's what good neighbors do, is help each other out. So to answer your question, yes, but I'm not looking to expand a kingdom. I'm not trying to build a hierarchy for me to to rule the world. I'm trying, again, and I understand that these are valid questions and I'm I'm I'm, I hope that people can uh understand that my intent is to take care of the people of Winslow.
Trish, to to kind of expand on that a little bit. Um, currently, if, you know, say Delta's tied up, they have, you know, all their rigs are tied up and there's going to be a long wait. I mean, we'll call Clinton.
Mm hmm.
And Clinton will come down.
Okay.
Which would be the same thing, you know, if if Delta were tied up and where our rig's available and Waterville has a call come in and they're tied up. Well, we're we're not going to tell them no. I can't.
Right, but our goal is to not go to Portland. Our goal is to maybe go to Augusta, Waterville, you know, stay in the.
Your local, your local.
Right.
To me, it would be our local our local people.
Okay.
Through the chair, I I really, I really have a a serious doubt that we would ever be transporting somebody to Portland.
Right, okay. Just wanted to make that clarification. Um, and one more question, Ray, if I can, is um, are we um, I don't know if I'm saying this right, but PIFT certified, P I F T, um, I if that, if we're certified, if we have to be. Maybe that's an autocorrect. I have no idea. Maybe.
No, that's that's an interfacility transfer. We do not have to be certific- licensed to do that. To do it, we have to be licensed to do it, but that's not what I'm looking to do.
Okay. Okay.
So to the chief, how many ambulances would there be? If you include Waterville, Delta, Winslow with one or two and Clinton in this area?
We, we would have, well, whatever the council's direction is, whether we buy one or two. We would have that amount. Waterville has two and, and Delta has their fleet. Clinton has their two. I can't, uh, through the chair, I can't speak to the dedication of, of uh, of units. By Delta ambulance. That, I think that varies based on their, their needs. Because they do serve seventeen o- o- other communities and are the major in- inter-facility transfer. Uh, organization for uh, the main hospitals around. So I, you know, I know, I know they do their best to provide service here. But I can't speak to the number of ambulances that are gonna be available um, on a daily basis. That's, that's another reason why I'm trying to, to have one dedicated for, for our town.
Ray, if I may ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Lee.
Well, it's not so much a question as, I just wanted to let everyone know that, yes, I'm, I'm the newest to the council. And I just wanted to let people know that uh, prior to being on the council and due to my medical condition. I have used transportation service a number of times. I, I, I would guesstimate two to, two to four times a year. I'd call nine eleven and have personnel show up and then get handed, handed off to Delta and transported. And I know in a, in a, in an emergency situation, I mean, um. Luckily, it hasn't been life-threatening, but in a serious enough situation where I was required. Transported to the hospital. See, seeing a, seeing a Winslow firefighter show up, paramedic show up. Well, EMT show up at my house and seeing a familiar face really helped the situation out a lot. And knowing that I'm, I'm, I'm being helped by the, by, by locals in my community. And I know, um, I feel that there's a little bit of comfort knowing that these same individuals. That are showing up initially to help me are transporting me directly to the hospital facility. And not handing me off to a Delta crew. That I may not know them, nine times out of ten, I don't recognize the face. And there's a big comfort level knowing that a Winslow crew that I would know. Would be transporting me to the hospital and it would really put my mind at ease.
Thank you, thank you, Lee, for that. I, I will, I will say this too, that, that, you know, obviously in uh, every family is touched sometime. By, by Winslow Rescue, they're also touched by Delta ambulance. The dedication it takes to be in the EMS field, the compassion, the dedication, the sacrifice that it takes. Is that uh, both services have provided uh, just unbelievable. Level of care to all the citizens of the town of Winslow. Each organization is run highly efficiently, highly trained and highly professional organizations. I have friends on Delta ambulance, I have friends, you know, in Winslow Fire. Uh, and they all are dedicated people that really want to try to do the best that they can do for the central main area. And it is a, uh, it's a passion. It's not just a job. Couldn't do that type of job without having, without it being a passion. So, you know, Delta's been in, in business since nineteen seventy-four. Winslow has had manned station since, I think, nineteen seventy-four. I believe it's the first time they were manned. So uh, so I, I want to say that and Lee, thank you for that. But uh, you know, this, I, I've used Delta in the past and when they come through the door, I've, and when Winslow Rescue comes through the door. I feel that with both organizations, that uh, I'm very, in my family. Will be very well taken care of. Does anybody else have anything at this point in time?
Ray, if I may?
Yeah.
I, I just want to comment on the um, the budget or the spreadsheet with the numbers.
Yeah.
And just for clarity, I, I just want to point out that we're already providing an EMS service. So we already have expenses related to responding to an EMS call. So we have fuel, for example, expenses, we have personnel expenses, we have maintenance expenses. So what the chief put together, the spreadsheet, doesn't reflect all of those expenses that we already have. So I think when somebody looks at this and doesn't realize that we're already providing the service, we're just not completing it. We already have the expenses and we're already budgeted for that. So what the chief put together is what the additional cost would be for us just to continue the service by transporting to the hospital. And I think that's a very important point because I have heard people ask, well gee, you don't have any personnel costs in there. And I've heard the chief try to explain, we've already got the personnel costs, we're already paying that cost, we're already budgeted for it. So it wouldn't make sense to put it in the spreadsheet and, and do it twice. So, I just want people to understand and realize that, that we're already providing a service and we've already got a budget for it.
Yeah.
I was also gonna ask about that too, because there was a lot of confusion about that. Delta does not provide a free service. You pay for that. Um, and we already have the expenses marked in as well. I just want to click, quickly say that we have a hundred and thirty comments in this live video right now. At least forty people have been watching it and it's crawled up to fifty people at times. It's been shared four times. So we are reaching a lot of people by having this live video. And there's a lot of questions um, that we've answered tonight. So, just wanted to say that.
Um, uh, Mike, do you want to uh, also comment on, uh, I know, on uh, how to uh, make a comment to the uh. How to send something to the town so that we can address uh, any comment that somebody wants to send?
Yes, I do. So at the end of this, uh, before we end the meeting, I would like to, to do that.
Okay, okay. Um, so before we, whatever we decide here, before we go. Just ma- make sure that I get back to you, okay?
Yes.
Does anybody have any other questions right now before? We have a couple motions on, we have a motion on the floor at this point in time that we have to address. And, but I want to make sure that, that we had done the discussion phase of this, uh, of the process here tonight.
I would have one quick question if I could.
Oh, for sure. We, that's what we're here for.
Uh, Ben, I was just wondering, Ben, are there more questions you have? Do we still need to table this? So that you can get other questions answered before Monday.
I would appreciate just, if three, three days is not gonna kill anything. And I would appreciate that. So anybody that does call me can get the information into us.
Okay, thank you.
So you're, so you're asking that people respond to you with questions that they have that we have not already answered? And you're going to give them the answer by, before Monday?
I did not say that, Trish. I just said, this will give people an extra two, three days. That are watching this meeting tonight, an opportunity to do what Mike is gonna come out and tell them they can do. And then, uh, say we bring it up on Monday night and that's when you vote on.
Yeah, no, my point is who's going to answer all the questions?
The people who are like on here, the, the chief.
Who's going to answer? Okay, so we're gonna ask the chief to answer all the questions that people are submitting.
I think we tabulate, my, my feeling, Ben, is I agree with Ben. I think we could tabulate to questions if there's something that we haven't thought about. Or something that somebody wants to comment, we can tabulate to questions into categories. And then if we can look at the questions, the category of questions Monday night. And then, you know, we can decide whether we have to address further issues. But at least we've given some time for people to comment without, without uh, and some time. And I don't think, Delta ambulance is a fully functional organization. And I think the letter that I circulated out is saying that they're not having any, any, at the present time. And no one can be sure what will happen in the future. But we're not here, we're not, we don't, we're not in like, oh, we better get these things going. I know we've worked eighteen months. But these are different times. This is not a time, in my feeling, is to hurry this situation abnormally. Is that we should, we need to give that extra time, given the communication issues that we have. And, and this is a great format that we could probably use in the future for our regular meetings. But yeah, I think, I think that it, but I, I, I fully agree with Ben at this point. That I don't think given four days to look at some questions and generate some other questions and having some. And, and doing a little more work on it is going to hurt anything at this point in time.
No, I agree. That was not my concern and I'm not arguing with that.
He just froze, Trish.
Yeah, um, I thought it was me, but I'm glad.
No, it's Trish.
I'm not glad, but um.
She lost.
Forgot where I was going. We were talking, we have a motion on the floor, Jeff, was it in?
Yeah, I, I want to get back to the whole questions and answers thing. Um, would we be better off funnel any questions? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Mike, but you'd be the probably easiest person to get all the information to. Have any questions funneled to Mike? That way we get rid of repeat questions and do a, an FAQ type of. A frequently asked question type of format to answer those questions.
Yeah, so when we're at the end, I'm gonna uh, give folks instructions about how to do that.
I think that would be great.
But we're gonna need those in by, those, any questions in by what, probably Saturday?
Well, actually noon time on um, on Monday. That would give me time to put things together, I think.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you, Mike.
One of the things we don't want to do is, we, we want, in my, and again, this is just my opinion. And like I said before, I am, I have friends on both sides of these, this issue, are very close friends. And I just want to make sure that, and my whole thing is that I don't feel this need to rush this situation. As, as, as that goes and stuff. And I think the public is hearing this sometime for the first time. And that if we do due diligence, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to be forced to make a decision. When I don't feel comfortable making a decision or let the other councils that don't feel comfortable making a decision. The worst we can do is, is to answer, these are legitimate questions that the council has. To go forward and to make sure that we have the right direction that we want to do. So uh, given a little time, I don't think is, is, is an issue. There's a motion on the floor right now, unless uh, unless, could somebody make a uh, a, a motion to end discussion? If they feel that we have discussed, but no one has any more questions?
Move the question.
Move to.
Okay, can I, can I make an amendment?
Yep, go ahead.
Ben, would you be opposed to amending your motion? To move this out to Monday and add that we relook at this. And go with one ambulance at the present time. And look at the possibility of that second ambulance later down the road.
The licensing requirements for the, for the uh, transportation system. So we have a motion on the floor to table. Uh, Lisa, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, I can. Jeff West?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yeah.
Patricia Ayer?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yeah.
Barry Clarion?
Yeah.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
And Ray Karen?
Yes. So at this point, Mike, if you want to come in now and you can. I know Chad's been putting it up, the address, but if you want to come back, that would be great.
Sure. Yeah, so uh, what I'm gonna ask people to do that want to comment, uh, that haven't already. They could send an email to townofwinslow, it's all one word, at winslow-me.gov. And if I could get those comments by noon time on Monday, that would allow me to put the comments together to, to give to the council. And have a response for, for the Monday night council meeting.
Mike, can you repeat the email again, please?
Sure. It's townofwinslow, all one word, at winslow-me.gov.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. And so the other thing is, folks, if they want to look at information uh, prior to a meeting. They can go to the town's website at winslow-me.gov. And you can either scroll down to the bottom of the screen and look for the, uh, the, the meeting that you're looking for. Might be listed there. If it's not, if you look on the left-hand side of the screen, there's a green button. Um, if you look at the button or click on the button that says agenda slash minutes. And then navigate to the month that you want to look at the meeting for. Then select the meeting. And once you select the meeting, a dialogue box is gonna come up with information about the meeting. Towards the bottom of the, that dialogue box will be a button for you to click that says read agenda. And so if you click the read agenda and scroll down, our, our intention is, is to put anything that's going to be discussed at that meeting. Uh, any ordinance, order, or resolution would be included there. So you would be able to go down and scroll down. Uh, through that information. If the meeting is upcoming and you see something that you would like to comment on. Then again, send an email to the townofwinslow@winslow-me.gov. And uh, we'll do our best to make sure that the council um, get to see your comment and perhaps even respond to it.
Can I say one thing? Um, I will also post that link on the town's Facebook page, so people can click directly on it and they'll go right to those items.
I would, I would also like to say that the committee did a really great job. I don't think enough praise has been given to the actual committee that we had for the ambulance service. Um, a lot of work was done by the chief, everyone on the committee. Um, so, and that included people in Winslow. Um, Delta was also there. So I would just like to thank everyone who put that extra work in and volunteered their time. I don't think that has been mentioned.
Thank you, Trish. And you're absolutely right, Trish, that we have to thank all the committees that work on all the, all the things. It's countless hours that you guys have put in for this. And uh, we, and I, I, I echo your, your sentiments on that, fully that you guys did a great job. And uh, recommendation to the town.
Can I add one quick thing?
Sure.
I'd like to urge the citizens that are watching to, um, if you're in favor of this, let us know that too. Um, uh, sometimes we only hear the negative and it would be nice to hear from the people who support this position too. Thank you.
If uh, if that is it, unless somebody has some of the comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you very much. We are officially adjourned. Thank you very much.